There you go.
Okay, so we have a fairly brief agenda tonight. We have one application, one new application in front of us, and we also have some minutes to review. And hopefully you've all seen those and the suggested edits that I had sent into today. So we can talk through those because as Chip has pointed out a couple of times, the appeals board needs to have those in hand in order to schedule the appeal on our earlier decision, the morash decision. So there's Henry and Dawn. Give them a second. Hi, Henry and Dawn. Glad you could join us. We just, we just commenced.
Hi Paula.
Hi. And I was saying we have a pretty brief agenda tonight. We have one regular application and we do need to work through the minutes and get those approved so that we can pass those on to the, the appeals board for their pending appeal. So the one application that we do have is for a medical cannabis retail store on Main Street. And so tonight, I apologize, you're going to have to, to tell me how to pronounce your last name. I won't attempt it and mangle it.
It's a sal, but I'll answer to anything similar.
Because sal?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, alright. And so the application before us tonight, as I mentioned, is for a medical marijuana retail store. And just to refresh everyone's memory, the process for this is, is really a two-part piece for, for cannabis establishments. First of all, it must meet the requirements of the L U O. And so we go through a regular site review process because it is a new business in town. And secondly, it is required by the Town of Reedfield's ordinance that a marijuana establishment license also be procured from the town. And the process for this is that both of those pieces initially come to us, to the planning board for review. And then assuming that we work through the process and approve those, they would be then presented to the select board for review and they have final approval authority on this type of application. So again, two sets of standards. The standards are related to each other certainly, but they are somewhat different. But the planning board is, is charged with reviewing all of those standards initially before the application is presented to the select board. So with that, for, for our new applicant tonight, our general process is that we take an initial look at new applications in a first meeting. And we evaluate those for completeness. And if we make a determination, a formal determination that the application is complete, then we would schedule the application for a public hearing. We would notify about in property owners in case they want to make comment, and then schedule a second review at an additional meeting. It's very common for us to approve applications in two meetings, but there are a number of cases where for various reasons it takes, it takes longer than that. Depends on the circumstances and on the issues that might arise. So, but generally, that is the process we follow. So I would ask you first, if you could summarize your application, just describe for us your proposal, what you would like to do, and highlight anything you think is of particular importance. And then the board likely will have some questions for you. But it would be very helpful if you could start with a summary for us.
Sure. Essentially, I found the location that used to be the old cafe on the corner. It's 1149 Main Street. There's a small retail location inside this 300 square feet that I'd like to use for my, my retail cannabis facility. I do my growing at my farm in Northampton, which would never be present there. So this would strictly be retail. With my state licenses that I have, I am allowed to have one retail location. And this is the one that I'm proposing and trying to get. That's essentially it. As for ours, we kind of took into account that it is a small community and I know that there are residents, residents living there or that could potentially live there. So we've taken that into consideration and made our hours just 10 to 6. And then closed on Tuesday and Wednesday. So it's fairly reasonable business hours. We have a simply safe system, which is a 24-hour monitoring system that immediately would contact us as well as authorities if there were to be any issues, as well as proper lighting, proper ventilation. That's basically it. As, as for the residents, I understand that that is a point that could be of concern, but I would like to note that there is one family residence in the building. We've actually brought the building owner with us in case there were any questions that we need to get clarified. Because we've discussed some possibilities there. There currently is no one. There is no family that does live there. They've moved out. So that's the only real thing to note. There will be a, there are two doors that, to the shop itself that are completely just for the shop. The residence has its own entrance that's before that. So it would be completely private on its own. There, the second door will be us from the front, from the street side. And that's actually not in yet. That's something that upon approval will be put in. And that will be the main entrance. There will be no one coming through the back or disrupting any sort of resident situation. I'm sorry, this is my fiancee Kurt. He's been immensely supportive through this dream of mine for years that's culminated to this. And this is Dan, old friend, and he's the owner of the building. I'm sorry. That's the team.
So I would open it up to planning board members. Do you have any, any questions?
I had a couple.
Okay, go ahead Chuck.
One is, I know that the landlord's there, but don't we usually need some sort of right title and interest, you know, like a lease or an agreement to lease or purchase and sale or some, something to show? Some sort of right title and interest.
Yeah, that, that was the, that was the only issue that I had identified when I looked at this. I didn't see any, any lease or anything that would demonstrate T R I. So perhaps you could respond to that. We, we generally require, I mean, if you own the property, we would ask for a copy of the deed. And if you're leasing it, we would be looking for, for the lease itself. And I didn't see that in the package.
I can definitely answer that. So the reason that we haven't gone forward with that, and part of the reason that I've asked Dan to be here today is because there are actually a couple of different options. Without an actual approval, obviously, I wasn't sure about signing anything or getting into an official agreement because this is, this is the business I'm going to start. So the other thing is that, as I mentioned, there's a three-bedroom residence upstairs that's a family residence. So if that were to be of concern to you, it's something that we've already discussed to add that in to the lease so that I would lease that as well. And to make sure that no family would be there. So, so that's why there is nothing on that. We've already discussed an agreement. Dan's already said he would get it to me. It's just the fact that we kind of wanted to hear from you and what your concerns were so that we could address that. Because if we don't need to rent it, obviously, I don't need to do that. But if it's of concern and that would fix that, I would, so that's kind of why there's nothing in solid.
Another question I had was, in your application, you talked about the odor control system that you would be installing. And I was just wondering, what sort of odor would come from a retail store like this?
The only thing would be of the cannabis itself, which I personally, I mean, I've been in this environment a lot and I've, I've done a lot of research in other shops. And I don't find the odor to be of any nuisance, but some people might. So just to cover our bases, I have just, it's just an air filter system that has the option of going into the ductwork and then blowing outside or just filtrates inside. So for the sake of, again, not being a nuisance, it would just filter all the air within the 300 square foot space. It's just a precaution. It's not necessary.
But you wouldn't. Go on.
Everything that I have would be in sealed containers at all times, except for when I open them to.
So you're not growing anything there?
No, never.
Okay.
And I would assume that you addressed the odor question in part because I don't remember exactly where it is in the application material, but I think that there is, is something that requires some kind of a statement about odor control.
Yeah, yeah. It was just about the nuisance that could be presented to anyone around them. That's just my solution to it.
And my last question is, why Reedfield?
I knew you were gonna ask that. I thought about that a lot. To be honest, anybody who lives here should really know why. I mean, I don't live here, but ever since I found this place, I mean, we've talked about moving here. We, we have our house in Northampton, but it's, it's just beautiful. Everything about it. It's a huge camping site. We're outdoor people. Everything about it just felt like home. We've, we've traveled all over Maine. We used to have a house in Limestone and we've been out to the Holton. We've been out to Callis. We, we've traveled everywhere. And it wasn't until I found Reedfield, and this is gonna sound like I'm just saying it, but I'm not. It wasn't until I got Reedfield that I really wanted to be here. And I thought it just has to be the universe giving me this, this shop and this town because it all just felt perfect. So that's why.
Okay.
Yeah. Others?
Just wanted to follow up about parking. So you've got a couple of spots that you referenced in the application. So I know there's some, some on-street parking there, but, but the parking would be around the backside? Is that, I'm trying to picture where you, where the parking would be.
The parking would be out front of the building. I think there are two spots there, right?
Well, I don't think I would limit myself. If you are to take command of the rest of the building, I mean, there's upwards of six to eight spots out back. They would not interrupt the lower tenants' space. And of course, the on-street parking, you know, we'd rather have people utilizing the back parking during winter than the front parking. And there's an easy means of walkway to their front entry from those parking areas. It's through the old cafe terrace and the old entry to the upper apartment and down the sidewalk to the door. It's a very short distance.
I mean, people usually come in and out fairly quickly. It's not a perusing situation. So I mean, parking, parking is probably too much of an issue.
So I would assume, one, and if there is a lease, that the lease would include some provision for the parking spots in the back?
I would also assume that.
Absolutely can. And, and just to backtrack a little bit, if I don't want to pay them to a lease and lose money, perhaps a letter of intent in, in, together, her and I would suffice for the board's, for the board's needs until approval is set, just so, you know, she doesn't lose any money with me and I'm just cooperating and working with her. We can certainly submit a lease draft, I mean, a, you know, lease draft that's also an effort to bring in what the board, you know, and what the town would not necessarily require, but like to see how it works and, you know, how it's written, especially with regard to parking access and hours.
How will you deal if you, so there's one other unit there that would be rented out to tenants or two units?
So currently, it is permitted as a duplex, apartment above and apartment below. Currently, the apartment below is rehabbed and has a new tenant in it for a couple of months now. The upstairs apartment has recently become vacant and I was about to rehab it and let it to a new tenant. And if, if our, if our permitting party here needs to, it sounds like she would just take over the rest of the building to appease the city and the board.
I was just concerned about the tenants in the downstairs and the upstairs. It'd be, how will you deal with complaints by the tenants about odor or the fact that there's this business going?
Well, there may be odor concerns because we, we're definitely taking care of that. And I'm not really sure what other concerns there, there really would be because our shop has its own entrances in all, in all respects. And there's another shop right across the street. So it's not like, it's really no different.
I don't know that the tenants would not be averse to a little lease inclusion, a lease update to their lease, indicating their acceptance of that situation that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Very nice, very nice younger couple.
Will there be any use of water there?
I have no need for it. There is a sink in the back, but what I do, it doesn't, I don't need it.
Isn't that building on the shared sewer system, septic system?
No. You got your own tank. We have our own tank, but the leach field is shared with the fire department and the library and us. So our allotment, which is 60% of the leach field's consumption or feed, we'd still be well below it. I mean, we're allowed six bedrooms. Right now, we're only using two bedrooms. And if our potential permittee here uses the rest of the building, it'll probably be remain at an average of three bedrooms. The consumption is very, very low there, extremely low. We're, I think we're allowed upwards of 600 G P D, about 40. Currently with one tenant, I should, I should.
Anyone else have questions? Concerns? Something else?
Jan's trying to say something, but she's muted.
Oh, okay, Jan.
All right, I was either there. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about the signage that you contemplate putting up. I see under the signage section, you talk about, you know, it's a cannabis consumption warning that you plan to post on the inside. But can you just talk about the signage that you plan to put, whether in the window or outside or a sandwich board and how you plan to advertise?
Oh, well, I would have just the basic sign. I think I've included what the logo looks like. It's a pretty simple logo. Um, and as for signage, I would, as I said, I already have to do what's required by O M P, which is what I listed in here. But if the township had any further requirements, I would, I would do those as well.
So I'm, I'm not speaking to signage, like warning type signage. I'm talking about like your advertising sign. Do you plan to put it in the window? Is it going to be sort of perpendicular to the building? Are you planning on using any sandwich boards or anything like that?
No, I, I, I'm not going to do anything like that. The only thing I would do is, again, it depends on what, what the township allowances are. But I kind of imagine just putting my sign in the window, just with, you know, of course, the medical cross and the 21 and over only signage and those kinds of things. But I don't really plan on going overboard with any sort of advertising or flags or anything. It's, that's not really the, the energy I'm going for with it anyway.
And so when you say your logo, it's the Happy Camper. It's a little camper. I'm looking for it in your application. I'm just, I know it's here. It's a picture of like a V W bus or something like that?
Yes.
Okay. And it says Happy Camper Cannabis? And that'll be the name of the store as well? Sorry, you nodding your head, but I can't hear you. Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair, I, that is probably one of my only concerns, is I would prefer to see some signage that's flashing like.
That's not.
Or anything that anything too aggressive.
Well, again, that's not, that's not really what I'm trying to do. I really, the only lights that I really intended are the required ones for security. That's, I didn't plan on having a, a light, a lighted sign or anything like that. Or maybe the only light would probably be the, the cross, the medical cross, just because that's how people know. But I don't plan on anything flashing or anything flashy. And I even have thought about if, if there were concerns of people being able to see inside, I could cover up the window and kind of make it just like a holiday display or something. So I'm not really concerned with people knowing what I'm doing because I also have a leafly account. I also have other avenues where, once I have an address, I mean, the word will get out and the patients will know.
Explain leafly.
So leafly is, so if you are a medical patient and you're going on vacation and you're going someplace unfamiliar, but you suffer from anxiety or some other medical issue, you would go to leafly.com and you type in the town. And anybody who has an account with them or is an advertiser with them, you would come up and your specials and your hours and people can kind of, from out of state, and especially since this is an area with a lot of campers and travelers, they can go on there and find us. And so we don't really need to advertise. We're already advertising in a, in a different way. I have no intent of getting flashy in any way.
Sounds like it's all covered.
I try.
I'm sorry, could I ask just one more question? And I may be thinking of a different property, but is this property currently on the market?
Yes.
Okay. Any thoughts on how that might affect the lease situation?
Um, so from, from my perspective is, I, I mean, I love this building. I, so far, I love this town. And once I'm in here, upon the success that I imagine I will have, I, I, we've discussed actually purchasing it. Because that would be what would be the most sense for us. So again, that would be once we're in and we see that this is really where we want to be, is really working and we, you know, then that, that's 100% on the table. It's been a very serious discussion for us.
Actually, I would add that, and, you know, not that it would allay any, you know, any fears or thoughts about what could happen after a sale. I mean, I think, you know, from a realtor perspective and from an investor's perspective, it's an investment building. If anybody were to purchase it for the, for the purpose of occupying it, they would likely have to honor any lease that's there anyways until the, until the end of that lease.
The other tenant that, that's in there right now, are they subject to a lease term of a year or more? Or is it a month-to-month situation? And what are you contemplating with this lease?
They signed a one-year lease. I hope they stay for 20 years.
And you're contemplating signing a year-plus lease as well? That's your intention?
The norm for a, when I sign, I'm also a property manager and area broker in Halliwell. When I sign a commercial lease, it's usually three years. It'll be either a gross lease or a triple net.
Okay. And I'm sorry, with respect to the applicant, that's your intention as well, is to sign a multi-year lease?
Yes.
We have not spoken about it, but I'm, you know, considering her professionalism, she probably understands a three-year lease is the minimum she can get into.
Yeah.
So to the applicant, is it your plan?
Yes, it is.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Jan. Anything else? Other questions? Anyone? And if not, we're ready for motion.
I'll make a motion to find the application complete, subject to them submitting a tentative lease with a letter of intent signed by the parties about that they intend to release, subject to approval from the town, and schedule a public hearing and notify butters.
Your second. Okay, Bill, seconds. Discussion.
I would just say that that letter of, sorry, I would just say that letter of intent, I'd like to see the lease term be put into that letter of intent.
And probably information about parking as well?
In the lease.
Correct.
Aren't we, yeah, a letter of intent and lease draft?
Right.
Those things would be in the lease draft.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I will take a vote. Dawn?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And Paula, yes? Okay, we thank you very much for coming in. That was helpful. And you can speak with Chip about the scheduling of a subsequent planning board meeting. We typically hold two meetings a month, but for various reasons, one of which right now is because it's summer and people are, are traveling and so forth, we may be limited to one a month for a couple of months. But follow up with Chip and he can let you know when it's scheduled to come back before us for the hearing and for the board's deliberation. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everyone listening to us. And thank you.
We'll be moving on to approving minutes, so you don't have to sit around and watch that.
As it will be.
Thank you so much.
Say goodnight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye, Jan. Miss out tomorrow. It's always, it'll work.
Yes, thank you so much.
Good night.
Oh, dear, sorry, Chip. Keep good. There you go. Okay.
Okay, so we have, as I mentioned at the beginning, the appeals board needs to have all of the minutes that address the morash application. And so Angelica has been working diligently on those. There have been some comments provided. And I provided some suggested edits. It was only earlier today that I got those together and sent them to Angelica. So I don't know that anyone has had a chance to look at those. But I can, and we can do this a couple of different ways. We can run through them page by page if you'd like. I don't know if you have them in front of you. Does everyone have those with, with my suggested edits? Angelica did send those out earlier this afternoon.
Yeah, and I, I added my comments to yours, Paula, and sent it back to everybody.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see them.
So, Paula, I read them earlier, but I have not seen your comments. So what would be helpful to me is just to know what changes you made.
Yeah, okay. Well, hold on just a minute. Let's start with, we had two sets. One was April 12th, the other was May 24th. So let's start with April 12th.
I didn't see any track changes of your edits, Paula, or anything.
Well, I, Angelica, I don't know what happened to those. I sent them to you with track changes. And, and.
Did you want me to leave the, the changes in there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So I just accepted them and then I saved.
Okay, all right. That explains it.
Yeah. But I, from now on, I just wasn't aware that that's how you would prefer them.
Um, well, if, I don't know that everyone is sitting in front of their computer, but.
I, I have them up in front of me. I mean, can we share them on the screen or something? I don't know. I guess Bill and Noel wouldn't be able to see them if we do that.
I have a copy.
But it looks like you have them in front of you.
You, you have a version. You, you have a version that has the edits in it, Bill?
Jack said it, but he doesn't have Paula's edit. So he, because those are from, I put those in the box last week.
Right.
Yeah, so those are from last week. So those just don't, those.
I didn't dig when I picked them up, sorry.
Well, I, I, I had sent those with track changes to you, um, earlier this afternoon. Angelica, is it possible for you to put that version?
Yeah.
Up on the screen? The one I had sent to you with track changes.
How to do that from Chip's computer necessarily. I can go pull it up.
I am not set up to do that on this computer here, so.
If she could just email them to all of us, maybe most of us could pull it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, do that real quick. Yeah, give me just a minute.
Take a two-minute break and.
Yeah. Yep.
I made a few, I, if, I made a few edits after that, Paul, you know, this, this, this afternoon, after I saw yours, Paula.
Yeah.
Um, but I can just go through those verbally if that's the easiest thing. I don't know.
So I, I had made comments earlier and Angelica just put them in. And so the versions that I think Paula and you worked on, Henry, already had my changes in there. So if you caught anything wrong with it, you could. Wouldn't fill up.
I tried, I tried to keep mine substantive. Let's just put it that way.
Un, unlike me.
Oh, I didn't, well, I haven't, I couldn't tell what your edits were.
Well, that's right. You didn't see, you didn't see what my edits were. Um, you know, principally I was, I was concerned with substantive edits. And because, you know, the morash and batara in particular, that were the subject of some of these minutes are, are pretty prominent and, and controversial. There were certain things I just wanted to make sure God included and, and were mentioned and were, were clear. And so I made substantive edits principally, but I came across a number of things that just because I was there, I changed. Like, you know, there are a number of references to more ashes, you know, in the, in the possessive. And I, you know, I, I changed a few little things like that, but those are, those are unimportant really in the grand scheme.
I don't, I just quickly read them, so I'm sure you did a more thorough job. I didn't spend much time.
There, there was more that could have been done, but I, I, I didn't have the time to, I didn't have any more time to spend on it, so.
So there was just, just for clarity, Paula, there are only two sets we have to review, right?
That, that's right. There, all of the sets, um, I think what happened was that Chip sent around all of the sets of minutes that dealt with the morash application, but we'd already approved, reviewed and approved most of those. The only two sets, the, the recent ones that had not been approved were four 12 and five 24.
Okay, so those are the only two sets we have to approve tonight, is that the?
Um, and actually, there was one more set. I forget the date on it, but it was just, um, it was just the set of minutes where we had been talking about the ordinance revisions. And so the minutes just reflect the summary that I had put together on what those revisions were going to be.
That's from three 29.
That sounds right, yeah. Yeah, and we had looked at those previously, but I had asked Angelica to revise them to be consistent with the, the verbiage of the summary that I had put together. And she's, she's now done that.
Why don't we start with those ones?
Um, yeah, that would be easy. So, um.
What's the date? Those are March, you said?
March 29th, 2022, and they're in your, and they're in your email from Angelica yesterday at 3:42 PM.
And as I mentioned, that was a set that we had, we had looked at those and talked about them briefly, um, at a, at a previous meeting. And I had asked her to make the language consistent with the summary that I had done for the select board, um, because it was a little bit different, uh, in the minutes that she had taken. So she did that. And the revised version reflects the language of that summary.
Yeah, I have no comments on.
Anyone have comments or questions about that?
No.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from March 29th, 2022, as amended.
Your second.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve further discussion. Take a vote. Uh, Dawn?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Paula, yes.
You should all have the, uh, minutes in your email right now. She printed out copies for those here. I heard it.
Okay, so these are Paula's red line?
Yes.
And then we have a separate Henry red line. But that already had Paula's changes in it, is that right?
Correct, apparently. I wasn't, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little lost, but I think, I might, might ignore mine except for if I could just verbally tell you which paragraph to change. It's not a big deal. At least I read them.
Did you guys get them yet in your email?
I haven't got it yet.
I haven't either.
No.
Haven't got it yet. Okay. Should come any second now. So this is a copy of what you sent out yesterday?
Um, this is what Paula sent me this morning and then, yeah, so that's why we didn't have that.
And Bill, it's a copy with, with revisions in it, um, underline, strikeout.
That's the one she just gave. Bill?
Yeah, I did, I did Jordan's paper copy. I, I just emailed.
I just realized I even made a spelling error in my edit that I gave back to you, so.
Good job.
You, you can ignore that now, now that I'm rereading. I should, I should have, shouldn't have done it so quickly.
Got it. Does everybody have them?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's all right.
And these would have Henry's edits too.
No, um, they were in two separate documents apparently. And so what you have, the, the, the red line version that you have, those are my, my edits.
Okay.
So which one are we opening first? The April 12th? I've got them now.
April 12th, right? So why, why don't we, um, you know, I don't, I don't want to have to, um,
Yeah, that's all good.
Run through every, every single change, maybe if you want to look at them page by page. And I, I would say that in, in, in some places, um, I did some things like change, uh, more ashes appears in these minutes, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Many times. And in some locations, um, I changed it from the possessive to a plural, but I missed some. And so that's, um, uh, that's inconsistent. When you get to the bottom of this page, I, I miss.
Those were my, those were my errors too.
I missed several, so, uh, those, those should be changed.
So the only, the only, so I'll just focus on my substantive edits, then I did, which are just a couple on the set. So on page two, one, two, three, fourth paragraph from the bottom, where it's read, Eric asked if the morash has built a 2,100 square foot. Do you see that sentence?
Yeah.
Do you see that, Paula?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for it. You said it's page.
Page, page two, one, two.
Yes, I, I see it.
Where it says Eric asked, I was, I put Eric Falconer. I assume that's who was asking the question. I was just trying to make it clear because in each of the other paragraphs, it talks, it has the full name unless they're a board member.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I'm wondering, in the change you made on the first page, um, like, when you had the strikeouts right before the paragraph that begins with Scott Morash, you had this explanation about a two-step process? And I was wondering why you took that out?
I, I, I found it, um, I found it really confusing, the way it was expressed. No, I didn't write that. I took that out.
Oh, I see.
I did not.
You do, you do say that a lot, however.
I say what?
The two-step process. That's like your thing. You always say that. It's quite common for you to say the two-step process.
Well, I don't think it is a two-step process. I think it's a.
Multi-step process.
I think it's, it's not steps. It's, it's multi-pronged maybe, but it's, uh, it's not two separate steps.
I'm just teasing, yeah.
I just, I found it confusing. Um, and so I just, I just replaced it, um, with the underlined sentence before because, um, and the Paula would like to know, um, I just found redundant.
I would, I would also add Justin Morgan after, you know, anytime you, Angelica, anytime there's a name of a person that's not a board member, put the full name of the person.
Sure, okay.
His name is Justin Morgan.
Yeah.
Uh, Jack, do you, do you think that the new sentence where, um, you know, I, I replaced that with something that says that, um, both the, the standards concerning replacement and, and expansion of a non-conforming structure are applicable? And so that was the sentence that I wrote to replace the two-step process sentence. Do you think that is adequate, or do you think that that should be modified somehow?
Well, I recall you did, I think Angelica got it from what you said, this two-step process where we would first look at whether the structure can be replaced and meet all setbacks, can be conforming or can be conforming to the greatest practical extent. And then step two would be, look at a proposal for expansion. I guess it's the same.
Yeah, I think it's clear the way you've rewritten it. I mean, I think it, the intent's the same.
Um.
You say they're both applicable, but then it doesn't say how they're applicable. I guess you say which includes a demonstration of compliance with setback regardless to the greatest practical extent.
Yeah, I mean, you know, thinking, thinking back on these situations where this has come up, where there has been either the removal or the movement of a, of a building and it's being replaced. You know, in, in reality, we've never, we've never dealt with those situations in two separate steps. I guess that was, that was my issue. And I think that's more your thing than mine, Jack, actually. But, um, anyway, it was just, it was just an attempt to, to make it clear. And if anyone has better language, I certainly would welcome that.
It's the, it's a replacement of a non-conforming structure with a similar sized structure. Didn't you have that somewhere? Yeah, you, you took that out.
And, and also the way this was expressed, I mean, one of the steps is not constructing a similar-sized replacement. I mean, um, it, it's, you know, we might consider what that might look like, but, um, you know, we wouldn't require them to put forward a plan for construction of a similar-sized structure. I mean, you know, that, that is not the process. So when I, I read the two steps, I'm thinking, no, we wouldn't require them to put that forward and then to put forward a proposal to expand it. It's, it's, it's not separated in that way.
Okay.
Thanks. I think it reads okay.
Jan, does it make sense to you?
I, I think it's more clear the way it's rewritten.
Okay. Okay.
My, my other edit was on page three, first sentence. Sorry, I'm just trying to move it along.
Page, okay, and.
Where it says Henry asked to clarify the square footage.
Yeah.
I would just add of the home at 2,600 square feet.
And, and Angelica, there's a little punctuation mess at the end of that, so if you could just fix that while you're in there.
What was that, Paula? I'm sorry.
Um, at the end of that sentence that Henry was talking about, um, after 2,600 square feet, there was a period, a comma, and then another period. That just needs to be cleaned up. Okay, so was there anything else on, on page, on page two?
No.
Oh, oh, the one, the one thing I would, I mentioned this earlier, but I missed a couple of places where I, I made some changes to, where it says more ashes as, as possessive down at the end of the last full paragraph. Um, there are three more of those. And if you could change the, um, you could change that to an ES instead of the possessive form.
Yes, I can.
Okay. Uh, page three? Page four?
I have an edit to the paragraph for the old business.
Um.
Second, second paragraph.
On page four?
Four.
Okay.
Says Chip announced that an application will be submitted soon. About halfway through that, it says, Henry answered Chip, answered that Chip is supposed to charge an application fee. And then it talks up, it's a bit confusing the way it was written. So I rewrote it, so it would say, um, it's in, it's in that email, Angelica, if you just wanted to look at it in your, in your other email, but I'll just read it here for the purposes of reading it. Um, supposed to charge an application fee, uh, upon submission of an application and a permit fee. Once or if the application is approved, the application fee for a small-scale system is the standard building permit fee. The permit fee is based on a kilowatt, uh, kilowattage with a minimum fee of $25.
And that's what you put in your, in your email?
You just, if you just open my email, it'll be in there.
Awesome.
It just, it just replaces that last sentence to clarify.
Okay.
Fees.
Okay, anything else? Anyone? Any page? Okay, if not, I would take a motion.
Gerald, take a motion to approve the minutes of April 12th, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
As amended, did he say?
Uh, as amended.
Okay.
Yeah, he said as amended.
Okay.
Um, okay, motion, second, further discussion. I'll take a vote. Uh, Dawn?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Noel. And Paula, yes. Okay. Um. And the second set is May 24th. So Angelica, while you were getting the copies together, we did consider the March 29 minutes and voted to approve those.
Wonderful. That's great news. I will watch the video so that I can document it properly.
Okay, um, May 24th, um. So some some of these edits are the same or similar to some of the edits that appeared in the April minutes, but there are some differences. Um, one of the the big things. Um, in the, let's see, the one, the second long paragraph on the first page, at the very end of that. Um. I. I attempted to figure out exactly what this was about and to reword it because I found it confusing. But ultimately, I abandoned that effort and just eliminated it because I was having a lot of trouble with it. And. I don't know that it is critical to the. To the minutes themselves.
Yeah, it was. I think it was more about the hypothetical explanation of how it worked, how it would work. Rather than the substantive nature of the actual application.
Yeah, it it really.
Did, did he try to? I thought he brought up that we had made decisions differently in the past. And he mentioned Cindy Smart, and there was some brief discussion. About Cindy Smart's thing. And then we. Didn't we then say, well, that's, we're not going to go down that road or something to that effect?
Somewhere else in here, there's an oblique reference to the Cindy Smart thing. Because I remember looking at that. It was in a different. Was in a different location.
In this set of minutes?
I think it's in this set. Hold on a minute. Maybe I can find it.
Yeah, because I think.
Oh, yeah, on page three.
I think it's. Or I think I want to say it's at the very end of the Marash. Right before the. Started.
Yes, yes, it is. It's that last paragraph before the Batar public meeting.
Page two and the page two.
But.
Yeah, I'm not even sure if that's necessary. I just didn't know if I was supposed to add in his like closing statement type of a thing or. For this, you know, can be left out.
What we what we said back to him, should that be in there?
Well, actually, this is a different, this is a different property. This isn't Cindy Smart. This is Nova's point. Um. I was thinking there was yet another reference.
Is it necessary to have even this reference in the minutes?
No, I I don't. I don't think there's anything that requires us to capture every single comment or or thought that's that's made at the meeting in the minutes, so.
Well, it's not substantive to this decision. I mean.
No, it isn't.
He he was saying it as a conjecture or comparison point in his mind, but there's no.
Right.
It never came up during the review or anything. It wasn't.
Right.
Wasn't substantive to it.
Yeah.
I would.
Jack, are you comfortable with just taking that out?
Yeah.
I I would recommend deleting it.
Will do.
Okay, so back, let's see. Anything, anything on page one?
You spelled my name wrong. Oh, and not again.
So the date of 5/11 needs to be changed there again to 21, not 22.
Is it?
Which day are you talking about, Don?
Uh, the first paragraph, public hearing, it references public hearing continuation of 1/11, 22, 4/12, 22, and 5/11. That was actually 21.
Was it?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it can't be 5/11, 22, which would be after. No, right before this meeting.
Yeah.
It could be.
If you go back to the April one, it it says 21 in the April one.
It does. Yeah, it does. You're right. Yep.
Oh.
That was a long application.
Well, it it did come in at 21.
Is it 21?
Yes.
Well.
Didn't we just decide it in this past May?
No.
Well, actually, I mean, if we're going to put all all of the. All of the dates, uh, you know, to which the public hearing was continued, it's it's more than just three. Because we had, I think it came in initially. And I don't remember the month, maybe it was.
Like November 21, I thought.
Was it November of 21? But anyway, it was.
April 21.
It was continued a number of times. Um, there was a break in between because, you know, they went and requested variance. From the appeals board and so forth. But I think we'd have to look back to make sure that we we've got all those dates right and looking at it again because there were more than three.
Right. But if you go to the if you go to the April minutes that we just voted on, that's where it says 5/11, 21. So I'm just trying to be consistent with that.
It it was 5/11, 21, because that was a Tuesday night of a regular planning board meeting. 5/11, 22 is on a Wednesday night, which.
It's Wednesday, and we didn't meet then.
We definitely didn't meet them.
Yeah. So it may be, Chip, but could you, could you go in and look at that and find all those dates? Because. Um, you know, we had opened a public hearing at one point, and it was continued several times. Um. And if 5/11 was one, 5/11, 21 was one of those dates, um, you know, it's it's out of order here. And so they should be put, they should be put back in order.
Are you sure it's 21, not 22?
Yes, positive. Here's the dates that the Board of Appeals asked for. 4/27, 21, 5/11, 21, 5/25, 21, 1/11, 22, 4/12, 22, and 5/24, 22.
Yeah, okay. And so most of those dates were dates to which we had continued the hearing, not all of them, because it came in initially. And a number of different things went on, but it was continued several different times.
At the at the top of these minutes, it's a little, I just wonder if it could be set out differently. I don't know. The minutes of May 24, 2022. Maybe just a space between refill planning board and the next stop.
Okay.
Anyway, never mind.
So.
I.
Chip and Angelica, could you go back and check those dates and and insert them, the correct dates here?
Yeah.
I have another question about page one. It's more of a, it's more of a, maybe we can do better in the future kind of question, which is. The attending people by Zoom are not in the room. We we should be able to get their actual names. Um, and maybe we could ask that in the future. Uh, if we have a public hearing or a meeting and there's somebody that just says Moon Unit, you know, we could perhaps ask them what their actual name is.
We have done that. And sometimes we do not get anybody coming on. I think the suggestion should be if they don't identify themselves, we cut them off.
Yeah, I mean, if they're in a public hearing, a public meeting or a public hearing, and they're in the room, for example, with you there, Chip, they have to sign in. You know, and they don't have to, but we usually get them to sign in. So we have a record of who was there. And if they speak, then we have a record of them speaking. So, um, but I think anonymous attendance at these things is probably not appropriate.
If they speak.
Right. But if they don't, then I guess it's like somebody's standing in the back of the room, and you probably wouldn't necessarily record their name. So I would just suggest that. If it's iPad for Moon Unit, or I don't even know what else that says there, um, I would suggest in the future, that's.
Can we delete that whole line?
Yes.
Yeah, just put it under others attending, right?
Well, I don't think any of those, well, are any of those names need to be there? Do they, any participate?
I don't think any of them spoke in that one. They were all just on Zoom.
Yeah.
Watching.
I would, I would agree with you, Dawn. I would say if we're not, if we're not, if we're going to put people's names on there, you're going to know what their name is, not some sort of arbitrary electronic thing.
Right.
Okay, thank you for entertaining my question.
Okay, anything else? Pages one and two. Three.
Minor minor edit where I asked for my name to be deleted. Maybe you could just say, Henry asked for his name to be be moved to the excuse list for those minutes.
Is it, it says on page three?
Very bottom, where it says 4/26, 22. And Henry asked for his name to be moved to the excused listing for those minutes.
And in the in the Batar piece, I had. I had added a sentence because I'm sure we discussed this, and I think it's important to the bottom line with regard to the Batar application. So that. That sentence on page three was added because I think it captures a. A thought that was central to the decision that we made on Batar. And I just felt like that needed to be included somewhere.
The one that says further, further, there was no.
Yeah, but further, yeah.
When these meetings are recorded by Zoom, is recording maintained for some period of time?
Yes.
How long?
I don't think he deletes them. We have an account with the cloud that sits there.
300 years, check.
When you're 96, you can go back.
I just remember that there was a a time when we used to record the hearings and then. Uh, there's this requirement that you save them sort of forever, and there was an issue of space. But now that we have the cloud. I. I wonder if, like, on an appeal. Like this, we could say to the Board of Appeals, the the hearings were recorded, if you want to listen to them. I don't know.
Yeah, that's online too.
They must know that because everything is recorded. I mean, the select board meetings, as you know, are recorded. Um, planning board meetings are recorded, and you can go back and. And listen to any of it.
At this point in life, I think I just assume everything I do is recorded.
I don't know, it'd be worth mentioning if they want more information about what was said.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if they if they don't know that, Jack, you, Chip, you didn't have a conversation with them about that, did you?
Uh, you know, not that that one, but Jack, you've been in contact with Will back and forth in this process. So. Maybe if you dropped him an email with, we approved all the minutes. If you need more, go to the cloud. Love and kisses.
Okay.
Okay. Um, any, any other comments on these minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from May 24, 2022 as amended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. Go to a vote, Don.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Jan. Yes, Bill.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay.
That does bring up, sorry to interrupt, it does bring up a question, Chip. Maybe it's worth. I'm assuming that somebody may know that some, assuming the state or the state of Maine or the town must have, or if they don't, they should have like a retention policy. There must be some sort of policy about how long you keep public records, you know. Sort of like IRS tax records, you know, it's like seven, seven or 10 years, depending on your situation. So.
Same words are only two.
The the written, um, you know, all the written records are forever, pretty much. We got boxes up in the attic, and they're all over the place. Um, Angelica just said to point out that all the recordings are on YouTube, so those are there. Uh, I do not know as if there's any requirement statute or law that says how long, uh, digital recording should last, but I can look into that for you.
Yep.
I mean, there certainly is a a retention policy for state records, but I don't ever remember seeing anything in law that extended to municipal records. There may be something, but.
Just just a thought, one, one day, something will fill up and will not be able to take any more information.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So will, after Angelica makes the changes, will Angelica or Chip send them to Will Garnier Holmes?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention, I'd sent the email about the in-person attendance at meetings, and. That was precipitated by some conversation at a select board meeting late in June. And Eric had been charged with communicating to board and commission chairs that it was the select board's. Wish that in-person participation happened to the extent possible. Um, I know I have, I have some continuing. Questions about that policy. And in reading the policy, I also have some questions about its clarity. My understanding is that the select board is holding a retreat in August. And I think that one of the agenda items is going to be around this issue and the and the town policy. Um, I've talked to Eric a little bit about it, and, um, you know, his, his take on it is that the policy allows flexibility. Um, he did make it clear that no one, um, either the select board or or he or anyone else. Um, you know, is going to pass judgment on members' individual decisions about whether. Participating remotely or in person is appropriate. And I do think that Eric believes that, you know, there is, there is flexibility in that policy. I'm having some difficulty reading some of it that way, and that's what I intend to follow up with him on. But. Um, you know, I, uh, Henry, you had, um, you had emailed me, and I certainly agree with your comments. You know, there is a great deal of government business being done remotely these days, um, you know, the state level. I mean, it's. Primarily remote, um, still, and things get done, uh, they get done well. Um, and I do think that we're all at a point where. Um, you know, it's not. you know, it's not just a matter of, you know, illness or emergency or something of that sort. There are occasions when just the convenience that it provides, not being able to get yourself together to go to the town office and spend that time gives you, in some cases, an opportunity to participate when perhaps otherwise you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to. So again, I think that, you know, it's viewed by most as being, as being rather flexible in that regard. But the one thing I did tell Eric was that perhaps as a board, if you wanted to think about this question and we could talk about it maybe next time. I was thinking that one thing we could do would be to talk about circumstances where as a board, we felt it was more important or particularly important to participate in person. You know, I'm thinking about things like, you know, if we anticipate a controversial application and lots of people will be providing comment. But that might be a situation where there is an advantage to as many planning board members participating in person as possible. And I haven't really thought all of this through in detail yet, but I was thinking along those lines that if we thought about constructing a policy of our own, when we would, you know, advocate for more in-person participation under certain circumstances, that that might be an appropriate approach. I mentioned that to Eric. He thought it was a, you know, a good thought and I told him that I would, I would talk to all of you about that and we can, we can follow up at some, at some future point. So I did want to see if any of you had any specific, you know, comments or perspectives you wanted to share tonight. And there certainly is opportunity for us to follow up further with Eric, who could, you know, carry any, any messages or thoughts to the select board as well.
I'd like to see Henry's comments.
Oh, I'll just forward them to all of you.
I send comments to the board, to the select board about this issue and also about some other stuff about the planning board. Which I guess my board. I'll send copies to the board, to the planning board.
And Jack and I had talked about that earlier and, you know, agreed that you know, there were a number of comments made at the select board meeting that merited some response and I was puzzling over how to do that. I didn't want to just respond on behalf of the planning board without vetting any comments prior to with all of you and getting your agreement and timing wise, it, it just, it wasn't, wasn't practical. And so Jack went ahead and submitted comments as an individual, which I think was very appropriate. But.
I guess I would just add, Paula, that, I mean, I'll send my comments to everybody if you want me to, but I, I guess I would, in addition to my written comment, I would just say that I think it, now that you've, now listening to what you've just said about that, that interpretation, I, I would hope, and it doesn't sound like there's any, you know, mandate coming down one way or the other, but I think I would, I think I would ask for explicit clarity and even perhaps using language like hybrid modeling or something like that, that's becoming more common in today's world. It's not going to go back to the way it was.
Absolutely not.
And I, I think the town needs to acknowledge that more formally in a policy rather than being, you know, trying to identify even, even specific circumstances. I do agree with you about the planning board side, but I think in, in general, the town policy should be explicitly supporting a hybrid model for volunteers to their boards and commissions and committees. If they don't, the, you know, that, that should also help with recruiting and getting people engaged in the community. If we, if we go back to something stricter, it really, it really could have a negative impact on the community. That'd be my opinion.
You should share those comments with the select board. You can do it online. As a form.
Does it just go into the ether disappearing?
No, I, I got, you know, the way we got this comments about the Batar application from Alex or whatever name was. If you go into the town website and it's, I think.
Oh, that sort of form, it's like a form.
Contact and you can direct it to the select board and you can sort of cut and paste something in there, type in there. I sent my comments and Dennis Price responded. He was appreciative of getting them.
So Paula, when I read your email sending, it was you, right, who sent the policy along?
Yes.
And there was the language from Eric about flexibility. I, and then I read the policy and I, I didn't really see much room in there for what he was talking about.
Right.
And
yeah.
Being disingenuous as a board member, frankly. So I, I guess I would like more clarity as well. I'm happy to reach out to Eric directly if you think it would be helpful, like more, the more voices just kind of amplify.
Yeah, no, I agree with you completely. And that's, you know, essentially the conversation I had with him that, you know, I, I believed we did need that flexibility, that I told him that I did communicate with everyone and as he had asked, I encouraged participation, but you know, I, I really felt that it was necessary to put something in there about, about flexibility because I, I agree with the hybrid approach. I, I don't think it would be appropriate. I don't think it would serve the town well to all of a sudden come down hard on the, on the side of requiring everyone to participate in person. And if you're interested in, you know, the, the context for all of this, as I mentioned, this, this sprang from a select board meeting in late June. I think it was June twenty seventh. And if you're interested in understanding that context a little better, you can, you can watch that. You can go back in and look at that select board meeting. Because it does make clear, you know, what, what happened and what the conversation was and how this issue arose.
It, and to save us time doing that, is there a way you can summarize that in one minute? Like what, like you're, is there something negative that happened or is there?
Yeah, yes. And there, there is, there's, there is a select board member who has a lot of concerns with decisions that are made by the planning board and, and how certain applicants have been dealt with by planning board. And that select board member also has concerns about in-person participation. And those were voiced in this meeting.
Okay.
To be clear, the concerns go way beyond remote participation, but I think
Yes.
Perhaps the backdrop as well, unfamiliar.
I see. I, I also think it's probably, I mean, my opinion would be also that the, the town have sort of its own sort of broader hybrid policy, but then it leaves it up to the each board to decide as a board what works best for that board, because I could see each committee and board having different, different pressures of in-person.
Right.
Needs, like the trails committee, obviously, that's probably going to be more in-person most of the time. But, you know, the planning board may be different, more administrative in our, in our function.
And I, I did tell Eric, my most recent conversation with Eric about some of this was today, earlier today, actually. I had to talk with him about something else and I, I mentioned this to him. And I suggested to him again that I thought that it would be helpful and appropriate if the select board did address this again at their retreat in August. And that I would likely provide some specific comment to him to share with them. And my comments will be around making, you know, we have that existing policy that they signed off on. But as Jan said, and I agree completely, if you read it, it does not provide the flexibility that I hear people expect that it provides. I, I, I read it much differently than that. And if the intent is to provide flexibility and to lean more toward the hybrid side of things and endorse that approach, I don't believe it does that. And I think they need to think seriously about modifying that policy to do that. So.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
Surely, surely other towns have already done this. Surely someone in Maine has done a pretty good hybrid policy, you know, for planning.
I, I would expect so. I don't know who that is, but I would expect so. Might be something that MMA knows about. I mean, they might be able to provide some, some help with that.
I, I know you want to go, but I would just add one more thought to this, to this discussion. Is, is, you know, if, if we do, if we inevitably, we will be continuing some sort of electronic hybrid thing, at least in the near future. But if it goes, if it goes longer, we may, we may want to think about, you know, a more robust technological approach to the public meeting process or the public hearing process. And I, I think Zoom is, Zoom is one platform that does provide more, more ability than what we're using in it and, or more controls and things like that. So, I mean, I, I was at a Yarmouth Town Meeting, for Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting, actually. And they, they have a very different approach to how they manage their visitors online. So, you know, I think some policies around that process is probably worth, probably worth the board thinking about because I, thinking back to the Batar application, just to pick one of many. But that was an example where there was a large number of public comment. I think you could, you can reduce the distraction, keep things very orderly and manageable and, you know, I think that's important to do and make sure everybody has their. It feels like they have the, the attention of the board and the attention of the floor when they're giving their comment. So even though, now I think about it, some of the Batar was in person, actually, even during COVID.
The, the big, yeah, the, the big, the big public hearing where the room was full.
But there's another ones, many other ones where, you know, it's confusing to people who are not there. And I would encourage us to look to other planning boards as how they manage the system, because I think it's helpful for people. So, anyway.
Good thought. Okay, anything else, anyone? Okay, thank you all.
So, so next meeting is August ninth.
We haven't polled everyone for availability. We'll need to do that because it is August after all. But that would be the next regularly scheduled meeting, yes.
So I think if you saw my email, I can make that one, but after that, I'll be gone for, for a bit.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So maybe, maybe you could do that, Chip, if you could just send out, send out an inquiry about people's schedules for August, see what it looks like, and then we can make a final decision on whether to go forward with the ninth or if we have to do something different.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Anytime now, always. Really? No, August is when my family just.